Everybody could be here today. Tammy has to take one of her children to the dentist in Tupelo today and she can't be with us. And I believe Bobby Joe's still ailing maybe.
He is.
Okay. But it's like this is-
She's pretty sure it's at your Monday night.
I'm hoping he's able. Got just a few things we want to talk about this evening and um. I'm just gonna start with this right here. I told you all I'd written Washington concerning a permit to uh work on the creek. It's almost not flowing down here. And instead of hearing from Washington, I heard from Homewood, Alabama, which is a district office for the Mobile District uh Corps of Engineers. And they sent me a letter referring to my request. And then they sent me a joint application and notification to the US Department of Army Corps of Engineers, Alabama Department of Environmental Management. And it takes uh in specifics, there'll have to be addendums to this, of about looks like four pages of answers. And I've got to contact every landowner that's involved in this area cleanup. And I've got to get right section range and township, which is gonna take uh someone in real estate business to go, probably a surveyor or an engineer to go to the courthouse and get this and resubmit it. And it says if there's any wetlands involved, there'll be special uh requirements for that. And how many cubic yards we're gonna be uh moving. Certain ways that we can handle the debris along the banks. We can't dig any root systems up along uh the banks. We can only cut the trees and bushes down with a saw. And we can dip out of the bottom of the creek if we don't go but so deep, so deep. And it's got the most, y'all can read this, and I've talked with Mike Lindley. He said it's probably a week's worth of work for him. That'd be probably about ten thousand dollars. And I figured we, no telling what it's gonna cost, just to submit a application for a real permit. So getting something like this done's not real simple when you have to get a permit to do it. And on the other hand, I was warned that the fines that go with disturbing the ecosystem for a city could be astronomical if they prove we did anything that's damaging to the ecosystem. So and wanting to help Carolyn out and others that's involved, Ms. McLean and others, it's becoming a little complicated. Just wanted to tell y'all that I'm working on this, hardly knowing which direction to turn. I won't spend any of our money till we have more direction on it. But I'm getting some estimates of what the cost may be.
Well, they can still take the, where I clean down the bridges out with stuff there.
Yeah.
They need to do that, because the bridges is-
The state committed to me to do the forty-three bridge. And they said it would do the other work. They'd take care of around both sides of that bridge. I talked to them at length about what we needed to do, in my opinion, and they agreed that they need to make some work done later. But I'd still like to help these people if it's at all possible, but it's getting a little complicated.
Do you know the name of the creek? That has a name?
Gregsdale.
I know I would start up where they live and I'd clean those bridges out, right there at the bridge, you know? All that debris and hedges and-
That, that bridge there, Carolyn's, is vowed to have uh large pieces of wood lodged against it and turned sideways. And it slows that flow down a lot. We took, we took that grapple down there the other day and removed an old tree that had washed in there. Just picked it up, put it on the back of the truck and hauled it away. From time to time, it wouldn't hurt to just have our street department check that to make sure stuff's not lodged in there. It does flow better if you don't let stuff gather in there.
I can't believe that's filled up like that. It's been let go. I like to go swimming, you know.
Yeah, it's been let go.
I bet you boy do all the way across.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had a diving board down there.
It could be cleaned out easily if it weren't for this environmental. That's where you're gonna kill some kind of tapeworm or something.
You know, that's seventy years ago though, Herb. That's how long it's been filling up. Cause we wasn't, we wasn't even thirteen years old, I don't guess, when we were down it.
This afternoon, I talked to our chief of police and he put me on notice that we're about to lose another officer to the University of Alabama Police Force, Security Force or Police Force. Uh, we've got one of our officers transferred to Tuscaloosa right away in August sometime. And he says we need to vote Monday night to post a job for a certified officer. He's gonna have an opening. And he's already uh aware of it. And he said that we're gonna have to hire another certified officer. He don't want to hire, hire an officer that he's got to send to the academy. They said he had enough young recruits right now. He'd like to have a mature officer that's served already in some force before. So.
Which one's going?
I don't, he didn't tell me. I, I don't know. Have you been notified yet?
No, not officially. I don't, I knew somebody who was looking that up.
I don't know which one's leaving. But he said that he'll be going to Tuscaloosa to join some officer there. So with y'all's permission, I'll post that job opening and we'll not need to vote to post it.
Vote Monday night again.
Monday night.
No use tonight.
No.
Comment now.
Not now. Uh, First Baptist Church, specifically Mr. Ray Cooper representing the church has recontacted me about our interest to sell our police station. And I thought they were not gonna be in touch with us, but uh they didn't have all their advisements from this group that came in here and did some work. So they're back asking for a price on our police station. And I guess that we're gonna have to decide at some point if we're interested at this point in selling the station. And if we are interested at what price. And I'm having some second thoughts, I'll just be honest with you, about even selling it. And, and the reason, uh, there's several reasons. I'll just lay them out for you in my thinking. The auditorium that we've got for our municipal court sometimes is almost full. Building a station back, uh, a police station that has that capacity of auditorium's gonna cost a lot of money. For security purposes, where the school's concerned, we got a police station thirty seconds from notification. We'll have somebody dispatch to the school. I like the security thing that uh it provides where our schools are concerned. I think it's gonna be real expensive, more than we can even realize, to, to put something out here on these grounds that are uh ample to, to give good service for our city. I know the building's gonna have to have some upkeep and maintenance before too long, but-
It's past too long.
Yeah, it, it's, it's got some obsolescence. The plumbing's not good. We, we might have to uh fasten and bolt our bathrooms and add some uh bathrooms because the sewage system there just doesn't, you can barely flush a commode at times there. And sometimes it just backs up and uh so I know they're going through rough times with that. The lighting's a little bit run down and suspect. Supposedly I know the building's not leaking at this point. Uh, it does need a few modifications. Where the upstairs goes, it feeds a lot of hot and cold air down that stairwell where we store stuff in the attic. We need to improve that area to have heat and cool it.
Well, you see, now we just got us a little bit of what it costs to redo something.
We got a big lesson there.
Something that cost a half million dollars to build and it costs three million to redo, right? So and that up there is, it needs bulldozer to it more than anything else, probably. What I saw of it and the shape it's in. I mean, it's awful.
Yeah. I don't know, I don't know if the church uh is buying it with intentions of any kind of use for the building or if they want to demolition the building. I, I don't know.
I made it for the youth.
Okay. I guess, I guess we'll need pretty soon to uh address, you know, bring it to a vote as to whether or not we would price the building. And then how we'll arrive at a price, whether we want to just go ahead and get a commercial appraisal done. That's probably the best way to price the building is to, is to go through an appraisal procedure. Even though uh that type building's a little more expensive to get appraised.
Well, we're gonna want more for it than what it's appraised for anyway. I can tell you that before you go spend money on that appraised. It's a good piece of land sitting there.
Yeah, it's a good one.
Yeah, yeah. And uh the church really needs it. I, I wouldn't be willing to spend another half million dollars on that building that's there.
Well, even if we renovate the building somewhat, we'll still wind up with an old building.
That's what I'm talking about. That's what, and it'd take, it'd take a half mil- we've already found out.
Yeah.
It would, what we had to go through being municipal to redo that building, it would cost a half million dollars. I mean, all you gotta do is compare what we've already gotten into.
Yeah.
And I'm like you, I like it being there in front of the school. I, I like that. But uh then again, I don't know.
I don't know if you can sell enough to build another one.
Well, if we're just building a police station, you know, in front of it.
But we gotta deal with the court.
We've got to have a court. We have two, we have two days a month dedicated to that court. And, and it's a, there's sometimes it's capacity only. It's run over. There's months when we have as much uh cases by the time the clients that have to be tried and their lawyer get there, the auditorium's full.
Yeah, we don't want it down here. Or I don't, I don't.
We'd rather not have to bring them because we can't really house them here. And we've got a nice meeting room, but it's not made for the courts. It's not set up for the courts. And we will have to have a courtroom. It's possible that there's somewhere in town that I haven't thought about it, that we might could lease some property for a while, have court, but I don't know. We gotta provide quarters for the, for our police department. And I don't know exactly how to go about that um at this point. We have been asked to price the building to the, to the Baptist Church group that's doing some uh decision making about improvements for the church. And of course, uh at the same time, they're talking about wanting to acquire our piece of property there. They're also thinking about that little section of street that runs between the Western Auto property and the parking lot and the side of the church. They want that little section of street closed so they can incorporate that in a, a closed section for the church. They own both blocks, but it's got a street running through there and they're, they want us to consider a closure of that street.
The street between the city hall and the church there, that-
No, it's the, no, it runs the other way.
North side.
It's at the court, it comes out at the corner of the Harry Green Law Office. That's now the accounting office. And it runs down where the Western Auto used to sit there. Uh, it's beside the church, be to the north. Uh, it runs east and west, but it's on the north side of the church.
They tried that a few years ago.
Yeah.
I think Bill Fife kicked it about that.
Yeah. It's, it's, it's won't be a popular subject. Um, it's gonna reroute some traffic. I don't know when we have the uh get down to the needed reading, have the public hearing. I don't know how much objection there'll be raised to that, but.
Yeah, you have a problem there with the, the school, with people bringing kids to school, kids getting to school and they're in church.
It, it's not gonna be an easy decision and it's gonna affect some people uh in different ways. I don't know what we'll do with that. Something they're asking us to consider, that's just another thing I want to lay out. I think we're gonna have to address these things pretty soon. I wish Scott were here today to kind of give us the rundown on what the steps are to a street closure. I'm, I'm sure there's a process you go through, I think, including-
Now, wait a minute. Tell me where you're actually, which, I, I, I wonder if I've got the right street you're talking about.
Or man, you go in the church.
Yeah, that street up and down, going north and south there.
No, east and west.
North and south is not, that street runs east and west.
Yeah, all the way down or the one that, just by the, between the church and the, the north?
Just the church, I believe. Just the church side, I believe.
Just the width of the church.
That street that, and then has the church parked that lot behind that too? Cause the church, where we park, our parking lot. You're talking about between the church and our big parking lot?
Yeah.
That street?
Yeah, they own that whole block.
Yeah.
And, and on the, block on the other side.
But that would still leave a street, the two streets going all the way down open?
Yeah. Yeah. Both the streets that run north and south will stay open.
Well, I don't see where that would hurt that much to close that. I mean, you know, it wouldn't hurt as much as the others, but exactly. Cause people, what I'm saying, people come into the school.
It'll be the least traveled street of all of them.
Yeah.
And that little section uh is all that we'll be considering. We, we won't be trying to go uh except one block. It's just that block there beside the church on the north side. But the street runs east and west.
Yeah, right. No, that's not as bad as the, would be there.
That's, that's a request also from the church committee that's working on the long range plans for the church. And uh that's just something we need to be thinking on. Might want to drive by and look at it a little closer. We've seen it a million times, but we haven't seen it with eyes of it not being there in existence and what it might do to the area. So it might be good to just pay more attention when you go to church or when you drive by to notice that street and how it might affect the area. Cause we're probably gonna be asked to uh-
I usually look at the two streets a lot, but I never go up and down that street.
And I park over there every time and you'd get in and out.
Yeah, I never, I, I go up in front of the high school or even up the other street down there. Regardless of what I do, everybody else may go the other way. Might know that I'm getting old, might run over them, might-
Do uh, do any of you want either of these items on the next agenda? To vote as to whether or not we sell this?
I don't believe we are ready on that.
No, I, I think you'll wait on that.
What about the, what about the matter of the street? Do we want to put that on the agenda to get that rolling?
That's what I'm talking about.
Oh, okay. Maybe item one and two, we'll just wait on those for a little span. Okay.
Both of those would go together, I think, kind of.
They, they kind of run hand in hand. The request is from both, the same party. The church is asking for both matters to be handled. We've uh, what, there's, this items, as Herb says, has been addressed at one other time. And uh based on the objections that were raised then, nothing ever happened. And uh we may have a similar situation. I just don't know. But these are the, are the requests to get a price on the building. They're not saying they would give a price. They're just saying at some price they're interested. And uh I guess our question is, are we ready or do we want to sell them?
Well, pretty soon we're gonna have to say that or spend another half million dollars or at least three or four hundred dollars. We've already experienced it, haven't we, what it costs? Cause when you go in there, it's gonna be everything.
Do you think it might be well to get a, an estimate of what it might cost to put a station out here? If we were to sell it before we make a decision? Do you think we might need to check on the cost of a-
New building for what we'd have to house, yeah. I would think so. And I think we put it out here, we could use a two-story basement cause we don't have a flat base. I've looked at this all the way around that we own because of them doing this before. And I got out here looking, thinking that, you know, if we had a flat, but it'd be a lot cheaper anyway to have a basement and the stairs part. And that's about all you, the cheaper part, that'd be what to do, actually. Don't you think?
Yeah, you can make a courtroom out of basement.
That's what I, that's what I thought, see. And the only other thing we've got to have is the police department and what else, upstairs.
Well.
What else have we got up there?
We've got, we're providing a space for the battered and abused right now in Safe Place. It's got a room up there that they use to counsel with people and people who are having to flee from abusive relationships are meeting up there. Uh, our collection for our uh fines is done up there. Our magistrate in the court accepts fines from people that's come in and paid. And she gives zoning permits. She does uh permits for building and zoning and that kind of stuff.
Well, it wouldn't take a big office for that. It is up there with the court part above.
So pretty much uh if we had a place for, we re- we really need uh quarters for the police and the investigators have to bring people in for interrogation and questioning sometimes. We had room for that. And you know, I guess some rooms could double as something else, but there's times when they really need to bring somebody in and set them down to question. If, if they're- Yes.
And they also have evidence rooms up there that are pretty much like a safe. And you'd definitely have to provide that for them. Wherever the police go, they'd have to have that.
Well, in the basement would be a good place for that.
I probably wouldn't put it down there where I was having court.
No, I, I say though, one end of the basement would be a-
But what did you have to think about ventilation and all that kind of stuff because marijuana grows if you keep it in there.
Like I said, it's a lot more than it grows while it's down there.
Well, it grows fungus.
Oh, oh, oh.
And it's deadly, actually.
Okay.
In heaven, you'd have to have probably an exit route. You couldn't just have one way in and one way out if you were having, I don't think, I don't know that.
And capacity for court.
There's a lot of people.
It's a lot to consider.
It's not a real clear cut and easy thing, Kenneth. It's-
No, and it's gonna be an expensive thing too when you get in.
Well, it's, it's definitely gonna be expensive.
Yeah.
And with us having to dip into our reserves to fix this recreation center, uh, we're gonna wind up having to, if we don't be careful, we're gonna have to borrow some money. While this administration hoped to pay off debt instead of making you debt, we could put ourselves in a position to have to borrow money. It's kind of one thing.
Well, we're gonna go into a good one right there when you, we've already found that out, Bill. We probably better leave that alone and forget about it right now instead.
It's, it's uh, it's a decision that is gonna put us in jeopardy of, of having to go back to another bond issuing or borrow money. If we sell our station, I don't think we can get enough out of it to put another one out here on these grounds and build a parking lot and things like that that we gotta have.
No, we've already experienced that. Yeah, we better not right now take on. I, I agree with that. I don't think we need to take on any more debt.
Cause we had, we had put that million dollars in a CD and thought we'd kind of set it aside as new reserve. But we're gonna have to dip right back into that or borrow some money and pay the debt monthly. And you know, I think probably paying for it's the best way to do it.
I know it is. We got the money instead of borrowing it. It's best, we had, then if we do have to borrow later on, in fact. I don't wanna borrow money when I got money.
Yeah.
I'm not getting anything out of it either.
I think paying for it's the best way.
Yeah.
Getting a small fee for it, but not much. Last spring, and we're late already, last spring, we picked out some areas that we wanted to address for cleanup. We had a little success with that. I wondered if the council wants me to try to address some other cleanup area for this year. It seems like we get one area cleaned up, another area gets jumped up. I'm trying to, I'm trying to do some of this without citations, but we already had to issue two citations. And we're bringing some people into court uh to, because I have obeyed the ordinance of keeping their properties. And I hate to have to do this, but I've been asking the police to deliver some citations of people who disregarded our warnings about their properties.
Well, usually you have to stick to three of them and then the word gets around.
Yeah.
I mean, they don't have to listen till, till you do something about it.
I'm about ready to issue a few more uh fines for non-compliance on some people that we've requested to clean up. And if, if there's no real objection uh from the council, I plan to issue a few more uh fines. I plan to issue a few more uh, fines in the, in the next few days. And I'm not picking and choosing, these are people that's had ample time to clean up, been warned more than one time. Hand-delivered warnings to clean their places up. And uh, I've, I've been at some of these places and I've sent our officers out to other places and, and asked them. In a good way to clean them up and they've been defiant. Let's say non-responsible, let's not say defiant here, I'll use non-responsible.
Well, that's the only way you're gonna get cleaned up, stick some of them, if they don't do it, ain't no other way.
I, I work kinda runs hand in hand with that, I want permission from the council to put up a few more stop littering signs in town. And I wanna put the, I wanna put the amount of fine that could go with littering. And I wanna find out what that is in our ordinance and have that printed on the sign. And I think we're gonna have to enforce some littering uh, ordinances too.
Yeah.
Uh, we've got people who are still rolling the windows down, throwing their stuff out on the streets and. Uh, if they'll only just haul it home and put it in their can, we'll haul it right to the dump for them. But they wanna throw it out for somebody to pick up.
Well, it's very simple, they carry something in your car, that's what I've got one, all of my cars, put it in.
But I'd like to put some more signs up and then put some bad into this law, because. Everywhere you look, all the ditches are full of debris that's been thrown out, car windows are blown off the back of pickups and.
Worst place I know of is over the, the little hill over there, about this side of where the bridge is out now. Going up the hill there, it's just right to come from Hardee's and throw their wrappers out right there.
Yeah.
The hill looks bad.
We've had one incident over at the bridge, uh, where there's some confrontation. And uh, I've sent the bridge contractor a letter yesterday. With my signature on it, asking him to have his workers stop hand gesturing people in the neighborhood. And uh, so, I'm hoping that they comply. It's just, it's that stuff all the time that shouldn't be going on, but it does. Uh, I was to the point with, with this and, and I hope that he talks to his workers and they stop doing that kinda stuff.
Yeah, they shouldn't be in danger of being run over. I'm equal to them. I mean, it's a. I mean, there's no way through there, I think, that makes sense.
Certain ancestors are ugly in their nature and.
Oh, yeah.
Those were meant, those were meant, those were meant to be ugly. They came out of a crew of workers that's over there at that bridge. And I don't want stuff like that going on, there's no cause for it.
That's what I mean, they shouldn't be in danger of being run over, of course.
I know, I know.
Can't go on through it.
You can't go through there. It's where the wind's in.
Anyway, I put the, I put the contractor on notice to talk to his employees. Without such.
We got a lot of places that need cleaning up, that's for sure.
Hamilton is not.
It's.
That pretty anymore, as much as I hate to say it, and we were talking, Angela and I were talking this morning about our road conditions. They're seemingly getting worse, still better. I'm gonna try to address that with our street department in the next couple of days and see if we can double down on our efforts to. I know it's hot on these guys right now, but we just gotta drink.
We're down to put that.
We gotta drink more water and, and, and do this favor, and it's, it's time to do it right now.
What about the parking lot, we've already, down there in Hardee's parking lot?
Hardee's parking lot?
Have you been letters sent to them?
There is uh, probably, we need Scott to, I want y'all to authorize Scott through, through me. I want, I want that on the agenda for Monday night, Angela. That we're gonna get Scott to put them on official notice of condemnation of their property. And we'll need y'all to back me in this, cause I intend to condemn their property.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And let them know this and.
It's like you did every morning.
Yeah, it's bad.
And they've had ample time and we've warned them numerous times to straighten that up and clean it up. And they don't intend to do nothing. So, if the council's willing to back me, I'm gonna go the full distance on this one. And, and do this once and for all, no threats, it's just a matter of fact.
Right.
We're gonna do it, I don't wanna threaten anymore. Kenneth, that's the best question that's been asked lately at this table, is what are we gonna do with it? Well, I'm ready to do something.
Yeah, it's been let go for the last.
I've pled my case. They're not doing anything and they don't intend to do anything, so if they want their property from them, we'll do it.
Is it Hardee's or is it that?
No, it's not Hardee's.
Oh.
It's the owners of the shopping center.
Just making sure y'all that you're saying.
When we mention, when we mention Hardee's, that's getting it in the ge- geographical area. It's everything uh, that would lead to the.
Well, yeah, it's all that shopping center.
West Hardee's.
Yeah.
That fronts that shopping center.
Even the buildings and all.
We want to, we not only want to address the parking lot, we want to address those buildings that are out ready to decay.
They're leaking this terrible industry.
Um, so, I'm ready to move on that.
Cause I am too, cause if the citizens gotta obey these ordinances and everything, this property, I mean, it should be, do the same.
Well, they've just let it get worse and worse and worse, and nobody bothered them.
Oh. I tried to go through there uh, the day before yesterday. Uh, and I've never seen it as bad as it is now. There's a orange cone right there about where that shopping center sign is. There's only about a third of it sewn, if you look at it at ground level, it's about a third of it sticking up above the ground. That's how deep the hole is there.
The last time I did any work was when Bill was still open, that tells you how long.
It's been a lot of years. That was a nice shopping center when they had the theater and all, grocery store and all that stuff.
Morgans.
Down there, yeah.
That was a pretty store that Wayne Dixie put down there, and when they moved, it went, it's went kinda downhill from that.
I guess it'd take a million dollars to fix that parking lot.
It would be very expensive.
Cause we know what it takes to pave a road, you think, how many, how many roads?
Did it with asphalt, you're probably right.
Yeah, well, if you did with concrete, it'd take a lot more than that.
They had to stop that heavy truck parking down there.
Yeah, that's what's done.
I promised those people, I promised them, and I said, we'll police it and we'll give everyone a ticket that gets on your pavement. If you'll fix that, I'll police it for you and I'll write a citation for every tanker that gets on your lot. And I said, I understand that they tear those, but I said, your lot's already torn up, it's too late to save it, you're gonna have to fix it now. That's when she offered to send me four thousand dollars, she said, I'll send you four thousand dollars if y'all do the work.
Go. You ask her about the other three hundred ninety-six thousand?
Yeah, man, that's just.
Yeah, most of those places, big parking lots like that, they have signs up, no truck parking, and that's the reasons.
And the big one down there.
I asked her if they leased their lot out to those tankers, and she said, no, they're unwanted guests that we've got coming in there. I said, well, it's too late now to, to save your pavement, but if you'll pave your lot, I'll police it for you. I said, our policeman will go down there and write a citation for everyone that puts a, I said, we'll keep it watched for you. We won't let them park there ever again, if you'll fix it.
They need the building fixed too, though.
Well, we're gonna have to go the whole game, but we're ready to condemn them. My inhabitants, we've, we've played the game long enough.
Yeah, you might as well get on that, cause it'll take some time.
Actually, oh, I was just, I just had a call from Mr. Cunningham representing the city of Windville. There's gonna be a meet and greet uh, at, right there in the building called the Civic Center, about the past time theater. For Johnny McMorra on the twenty-sixth. Starting at five P M, if anybody wants to go to a meet and greet, we're inviting the council and anyone that works here at the city hall.
Twenty-six?
Yeah.
What was that again, I don't know, I guess.
That's a whole.
It's in that?
Yeah. Starts at five.
Two weeks, plenty of years.
Yeah. We'll talk more about it, if we wanna get a group together and go, we can. He just sent out an invitation today, and he wanted me, I said, part of the council's here today, I mentioned it. Y'all got anything else you wanted to discuss today?
You got anything to write in the paper here?
Oh, it is time for us to look at the uh, contracts we got with uh.
Retail Strategies and uh, Jemison?
Yeah, Jemison Incorporated, those two company, we've been in them a year now. And we've been doing Jemison Company thirty-three hundred, thirty-three dollars, thirty-three cents a month. We've been paying Retail Strategies uh, forty thousand, is it forty, thirty?
I think we paid them forty-five in one lump sum, and then this year it would be forty.
Yeah, it dropped from forty-five to forty by staying with them. We, we actually signed up a three-year deal with them. But we can drop out, if we vote to drop out without a penalty, uh. There's some things in the mail working right now that uh, may or may not work out through them, but. I'm not advocating we drop out with anybody, I'm just saying they're working on some projects right now. Both groups are working on some projects, uh, Jemison Company's working on a grant for four hundred thousand that we hope to get. Uh, and Retail Strategies told us going in, it might be up to eighteen months before we see any fruit with them. But they're working for a lot of towns and, and they're doing some good in some of the towns they're working for. So, I don't know, I'm not, I'm not saying anything against either company, I, I don't have any reason to doubt that they're trying to work for us. Sometimes it's hard to see the direct fruits of these things uh, in short order, but. Look how fast a year can pass, don't seem like it's been a year since we signed up with these folks, but it has been. And those, both contracts are up and due right now at the end, so. So, we've got to.
That one bunch.
We gotta vote on those pretty soon.
You say, that one bunch though has got us, probably that four hundred thousand is pretty well secured, isn't it?
Well, we've got to close out that other grant program before they can actually have a second grant on the same. It's gonna go, that money's gonna be spent on the same piece of property.
Yeah.
And we got a fifty thousand dollar grant that has tied it up, we're about to close it out. Mike Linnley told me that they were, had that description ready to bring to, to his wife, ever bring that to you today?
I haven't seen her, unless I missed her.
He called me this morning and actually sent me a text message and asked me how many copies of the legal that I needed. And I told him I needed two. And uh, they went back to their office yesterday evening, last night, and worked out that legal description so we can. Show the area we spent that money on.
Now, I got a, a bill from Retail Strategies for us to renew, it's not a contract, it's just a, a bill. But I haven't gotten anything from Jemison.
Yeah.
Any kind of renewal clause.
We've been doing their, these people uh, don't offer us a monthly plan, as far as I know. Uh, the other company lets us spend for the month. Will we bring those up, probably? Next, I guess, the next meeting.
I think our auditors, aren't they scheduled to come Monday to give a review?
Yeah, they're, they're gonna make the presentation this week. Uh, they've wanted to get that done before the twentieth, I think that's the deadline on audits for cities, is that not kind of a deadline they need?
I think so, I'll double check to make sure they're still gonna come Monday night.
The rig, the rigs firm did our audit and they're gonna give us a report to our full council.
I don't know what everybody else feels, but I feel like we should do our job with them and get them that information they need. And if they don't do their job and get us something, I'm getting out.
Yeah.
But we need to do our part and get what we're supposed to, if they, if we're making money off of doing it, fine, if we're not. I, I, I don't see, and I, I don't think any of us feel that, that we should.
You're talking about Retail Strategies.
Yeah, all of them keeping on, if we're not getting anything out of it.
Yeah.
You know, if they're not doing something for us, but as my understanding, one of them has got us about four hundred thousand dollars, but I don't know which one it is.
Yeah.
We just need to get them.
That's uh, Garrett Jemison and his group.
Yeah.
They're working on that honey place.
That's what I feel, that's the only reason I agreed to hire them.
Me too.
If they do something, fine, if they don't, get rid of it.
Get rid of it, yeah.
I'm, if we don't.
We need to do our part to get it done.
If we don't, and Retail Strategies told us going in, it might be eighteen months.
Yeah, I remember that, yeah.
I'm for, I'm for staying with both of them one more year, and then if we don't see fruit, next year I'm ready to go some other direction.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
We're paying good money there and we need results. The only thing that, that Retail Strategies has come back to me with, and I shared it with Jim, is that. Um, they're saying that Jacks want us to do a tax incentive for them, for them to come here. And, and what I think Jacks is gonna do is get a developer to build them a building and. They're trying to recover the money that they spend setting it up inside, like their kitchen, their freezers. They're wanting to recoup three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars of capital outlay, which certainly won't buy a lot, build a building and equip it. So, I figure they're gonna lease their building when they come here and they're gonna try to recover the three hundred and thirty thousand dollars that they spend to set up the restaurant.
Well, I'll do it, I'll do it if you'll do that for me instead of them doing it. I don't believe in giving a hamburger place anything, that, we got competition down through there, we got plenty of hamburger places. Now, it's a different story when we start talking about gas stations and truck stops. I had never even thought about it until this thing came up down here about him wanting to build. That we got one station all the way from Hamilton down to the interstate. There's one, I don't know what you call it, you know, just a, you can hardly get in it, but you know, that's the only gas station we've got down this road, the busiest highway we got. And of course, the only reason we agreed with this down here was to get that out on the interstate too. Of course, that boy's talking about spending millions of dollars.
Yeah.
And personally, I, 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 I don't think, uh, now I'm just speaking for myself, I, I, I don't believe in putting somebody in competition. With McDonald's, Burger King and them that's just spent thousands of dollars redoing their business. And us give somebody to go and business competition across the road from them. I, I just don't think it's right, but that's up to y'all, but I, I, I can't see it.
It might, might not be a deal breaker if we don't help them some.
Oh, no, I think they just heard that we were giving somebody else.
He said it's standard to every co- community they go to now, if they ask for an incentive package. And uh, I just want to say, I don't know if it's a deal breaker or not, but if, if, let's just say it is a deal breaker. And this would be, might be the community's opinion, well, you guys had a, a chance to get a Jack's, but you wouldn't work with them, so they went somewhere else. And uh, you know, I've had things like that said about uh, the community already, is that they had a chance to get it and they didn't get it. Well, there must have been a reason they didn't get it, so I don't know how often Jacks would come to your door and say. So, I don't know how often Jaxx would come to your door and say, I wanna come, and I don't know if they will come without some kind of a.
Well, you know, they were here once before.
I know.
And they left. I mean, my goodness.
Two more times.
Uh, two more ti- yeah.
And Ellis Building and.
Yeah.
And Burger.
Yeah, they've been here, I mean, I, I just don't see with, we didn't give McDonald's anything. And we didn't give Burger King down there anything, they just got through completely pre-vamping both of those. I, I just don't see, well, I'll never vote for it anyway.
Well.
To give a hamburger place something.
We're just discussing it today, we ain't voting today.
I know it, but I, I'm, I wouldn't care if we voted next week or next year tomorrow, I don't think it's right.
But the, the point that I'm making is that they're here now and they're, and, and we gotta, we gotta make a decision. Cause they're gonna present a package to us and say, this is what we'd come for. And if we say, we can't do that, I don't know if it's a deal breaker or not, I really don't know. It may be that, 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 that would cause them not to wanna come.
We're starting something though Bob, that's not good for Hamilton. We're starting something that we're putting somebody in competition with, we've already got five or six of them here. Now, if it's something we didn't have, we don't have a truck stop here, we don't have that, well, we don't have anything on the interstate, well, I believe in giving that.
Yeah.
But something that we've got five or six already here and put something, pay somebody to go and talk, we're not gonna gain anything.
Yeah.
A hamburgers, we've got plenty of them.
Well.
We need something that we're gonna gain extra money off of, and I don't see where we got any, do y'all? You see where we gain anything?
There's some people that would eat a Jaxx hamburger or Jaxx chicken that wouldn't go to some of these other places.
Well, they're not gonna drive to Tupelo or something where they get a Jaxx thing.
Uh, so Jaxx has some things that are better than some of the other places. And some of the other places has some of their products that's more favored over Jaxx, but. But Jaxx does have some things on their menu that some of the other places don't serve.
Well, why they already been here twice and left? And the competition wasn't yours still, things that is not.
I can't answer that.
Well, it, now I'm not giving them anything.
What, we, uh.
I don't know, I'm, I'm right reverse, I'm willing to do anything and bring anything in here.
I'm not gonna give them anything, I've already been there twice and left, so I'm putting them in competition with a bunch of people down through here.
I know, but we did the same thing for gas stations.
But ain't no gas stations down through here, that's truck stops, we're not, we're talking about millions of dollars.
Whatever comes in here.
Yeah, but.
I mean, if they stay a year, I think he can follow them, they stay, I don't know.
I wa- I would like to see revenue off of every business and, and we get half of it. And we're not getting zero, and we're getting zero off of zero now, and somebody comes here, we get something.
We get something.
When I was in business, I went into business. Nobody gave me anything.
That's what I'm hearing about us, these other gas stations are saying the same thing about what we go to down in the night. And that, but the only reason I did that is because I'm wanting stuff in here, I'm wanting, like you said, we're getting zero. And I don't know, you gotta fight for this stuff nowadays, you can't, I mean, they're going to every town.
You're talking about truck stops is a different thing than a hamburger place.
But I'm looking at everything in this business.
Yeah, but I, yeah, but there's certain things that you can't.
I mean, everything's a business.
We don't have a truck stop in Hamilton.
But Gene, back when you were in the, in the, uh, food business, uh, waitresses made a dollar seventy-five an hour. That, these places now are having to pay ten bucks to get anybody that'll stay with them anytime. And I know a dollar seventy-five was bigger then, that dollar seventy-five.
Yeah, my hamburger didn't cost but a quarter.
I, I know.
And the coats cost a nickel. You're talking about a different world, Bob.
I am, I am, and, and that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying about modern times.
Yeah.
That cooking equipment and cooling equipment that they put in these restaurants now. Uh, most of the requirements of that stuff, you can't just get a refrigerator and set in a, a building. The health inspector is gonna come see you by the way, and they're gonna say, you don't meet the standards, we're gonna close you down today. And, and there's requirements and everything that's different than they used to be. And so, I'm just saying that, that even though there's reasons not to wanna help. Uh, if it's a, a deal breaker and we don't get them, I think we'll be sorry later that we didn't get them.
Well, what are we gonna do, we're gonna go back and give the McDonald's money, some money, they haven't asked. Well, he's, I don't think he's not peeved off.
Well, he may be.
I mean, he is.
Well, then, so is these other, these gas station owners, they're.
They're not, they ain't no use, that's, we're talking about truck stops.
But I wasn't around when all them were brought in here, I wasn't here sitting on his council when McDonald's and Burger King, I'm here now. And I can do what I can do and bring everything up here.
We got one dealer in town, Fowler. Who did I go to the first thing to talk to him about if he wanted to build a truck stop out on the interstate? Or if he wanted to better his station down here and build a truck stop? Fowler, I said, now we're looking to get a truck stop here and you're the gas distributor here. And I wanna know if, right now, if you're interested in doing it and we'll give you some help. No, I'm not interested whatsoever. And he and I, he knows this, he and I had that conversation before any of this ever happened, he's the only dealer we got in Hamilton, Alabama. And he had to change it, he said no and he'll tell you that today.
But these may hear, just like he said, if this is a deal breaker, this Retail Strategies, they're the ones bringing this stuff in. They're getting us these restaurants, there's gonna be other restaurants coming. If we don't have these, we're gonna tell these others the same thing?
We're paying Retail Strategies to get them here, not if, if we're gonna have to pay them, I can get them here. We don't have to pay Retail Strategies.
Well, I agree.
But I don't believe in paying, you'll have every restaurant in the country wanting to come in here and get that money.
Well, I hope, I mean, I'm hoping.
But it ain't gonna help you any, we don't have the people for, to take care of them.
That's the idea, is the more things you offer, the more people are gonna shop with you. We want to bring people to Hamilton. Uh, there's folks at Braylet that would drive here for a certain meal, there's folks at Hekelberg that would come here, they don't. They got Jack Rabbit Slim up there, I think, for their restaurant and, and something in the, in the grocery store. And Jack Rabbit Slim's just closed its doors. And so they're down to having a, a deli in the grocery store, so there's folks at Hekelberg that would drive over here for a good meal. And.
And I don't drive here for a hamburger.
And I'm, I'm proud of that. Uh, if they got children, they will.
Oh.
I used to carry my kids to McDonald's all the time, that's the only place they want to stop.
You need to talk to the McDonald's man, cause he's peeved off if we give him anything. And he lives here in Hamilton, he owns three of them or four of them, and he moved to Hamilton, Alabama, and he donates. Money, a lot of money to a lot of things in Hamilton. And there's not another restaurant here that donates anything.
To the Bird family.
Now, he's a big donator to all kinds of.
No, he bought the ceiling tile, some fan holler.
Yeah, anything, some more things that he's bought, you know.
The, the Bird family's a great family.
Yeah, he, he's one that's really, he's got through spending a lot of money.
They're wonderful folks, I, I don't have anything to say about them except good things. Uh, I'm just, I'm just saying, this is gonna come up, there's gonna be, um, opportunities like this and. Um, I don't think we should be, uh, without looking at both objectives, both. I think we need to look at all of the options anytime we're offering something. And, uh, I certainly. The next time it may not be a hamburger place, it might be a furniture store, it might be, I'm not saying we'll always be asked to help, but. Those that do ask you for something, do you answer them yes or no, you have that option. Uh, and I think we ought to look at all the avenues before we just do a closed mind decision about it. And, uh, you know, I'm not, I'm not near ready to stop discussing it because I think it's worthy of discussion. And everybody's gonna vote their privilege then, that everybody's gonna have a chance to vote. And, and I'm glad that we do it that way, cause I wouldn't have it any other way. Uh, I certainly, uh, appreciate the democratic system we have and I like it when we all can vote yes. Or if we really decided something not good for the city, we can all vote no. And, and I'm not disgruntled when there's a split vote. It's just that I think we all should vote our conscience on things and, and look at all the avenues that are, are available in any matter and. Uh, I don't, I don't wanna ever say I won't look at something, especially if it's a new business coming. Uh, and that's just where I'm coming from.
Well, you're talking about, yeah, like you're talking about, you're talking about the hamburger place that's asking for the tax break. Is like you said, they're gonna put about two hundred to three hundred thousand dollars into it. These other people we're talking about puts millions into it. And that's the company that's building the building they rented it from, or leased it from.
I don't know exactly the setup they're doing. Uh, but I'm thinking that they're trying to recoup their capital outlay and then, then we get a hundred percent of taxes. And that's when the good times come, is when you start getting all the taxes. Uh, to get them here, we may have to do a little something, but, uh, there'll be times when we'll be reaping the whole. The whole thing and, and, and that's gonna be the good times because we will really realize something out of it.
I don't think we're, certain businesses I don't think we should do it with, and that's one of them is food businesses. Just like I said, they've been here twice before and they didn't do any good and I, I don't see giving any kind of a food business.
Well, that, this is what they're saying, Gene, and, and I've been listening to the conversations and. They're saying that Jaxx is coming here, even though the, the count wasn't the best, the conditions that they're coming under aren't the best. They know they're not gonna set the woods on fire, they know they're gonna have to gain their popularity and their, their crowd of people they feed. And, uh, you know, they're saying the count's not just right, that we don't have the exact numbers they desire to have. So they're coming even with that against them to try to serve our community and.
Well, these others serving their community though on their own money. Cause McDonald's, they put out about a million dollars and sold it burgers, King down there their own money. And didn't ask us for anything, and then us go put competition in against them. They're trying to make their money back and we're giving these other people their money back.
Well, we, we know, we know that they've just underwent renovations, but. The franchises require these companies to go and update once in a while because. Every business gets a certain look at a certain time. And as, as they can work these things, they go through every one of them and update them. Co- it was just time for those people to update their, uh, places. It's the reason they underwent these, so they look like the modern McDonald's, the modern Burger King. That's the new look they give it. And you saw the same thing down at Taco Bell recently. They, they put their new face on it and it, and they shine for a while. After a while, that wears down and they put, reface it again. So these, they're always gonna refurbish these because they do it.
It's gonna be the third time this one's refurbished, dude.
They do it because it's profitable for them, it brings it, I mean, every time they look new, they get new customers. So they do it for money, they do it for profit.
Well, if these others can't make it Bobby like they do, I, I don't wanna give them money to make it on.
Well.
That's what's wrong with us now, we don't have no money, we got.
They, these other people have got their audience, they're already feeding their customers. And these other, and these, Jaxx don't have a single customer when they walk into town, they have to cultivate every customer that they build.
I, I don't.
So, I, I'm just, I, I'm throwing this up for discussion because I know it's coming to us and we'll have to vote to decide what we, what we're gonna do.
Well, you might as well get ready to give every hot dog and shop and everything else that comes in here then a tax break.
Well.
Cause that's what it's gonna amount to now, that's just the way it is. You gotta have a stopping place.
I, I love what Little Caesar's did two weeks ago. They called me up and they said, we're so proud of our business in Hamilton and they didn't ask us for, for nothing. And they said, we're so happy to be in Hamilton, we've got a truck that travels around to sites. And we feed certain hours, we give pizzas, as many people come, we feed them. And underprivileged, where can we go to a food shelter and set up and feed people? What, this is a service we provide in communities like yours. And I put them in touch with Dr. Kerr, I said, Dr. Kerr's been real instrumental in running a food pantry and, and feeding a lot of helpless people and. I said, it would honor me if y'all would park at the hospital with that, in his honor and, and, and feed these people. They said, well, we travel around, we, we're looking for a place just like Hamilton to come back and give something back to the community. So Little Caesar's is a good example of somebody that came here and didn't ask for nothing.
Yeah.
They haven't asked for nothing, they didn't want nothing, they just wanted to be in Hamilton. And that's a good thing, but Jaxx is gonna ask for something because they put a more substantial, uh, place then than, than Little Caesar's has to have. They're not franchise dealer. Yeah. They're all corporate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're not gonna have much, the fran- whoever, the company's gonna have most of the money for the building.
A nice gesture that they had.
All they're gonna do is put their equipment in. Us pay for that and they don't have anything.
They said, while we're parked at your location, everybody that comes and requests pizza will get free pizza, that's at no cost and then.
Well, we're gonna have to set a precedent somewhere, we can't give every business that comes in here a tax break.
I understand, I understand.
And we're gonna have to, it's, it's gonna have to be a certain amount of money or something, a million dollars or something, and they're gonna have to invest or. Or more and not in competition with everybody that's still here and make their living here and pay for it.
That's another point, that's another point.
Oh, that's a few years ago. Yeah, that's what I'm, yeah.
That's another point I want to make.
I never didn't know what to give Marvin's, but they gave them something. Yeah, yeah, they did.
This is what I wanted to talk to you about today, uh.
Same bay over at Porter, move to Jasper, they get that incentive everywhere they go. It's that five years.
I had thought about this earlier today and we kinda touched on it in the council room the other night. Everybody that shows up at your door is not gonna have the same package of needs, they won't, they, they'll need this or, or they'll need this. But they won't need this, so I think we need to be somewhat flexible to listen to these people. And willing to say, can we work with these people on these requests? And, and the thing about it is, uh, what we did for, uh, Mr. Sibley, we kinda custom designed. We gave him a short term down here where he's kinda in the middle of competition. We gave him a little more time out there where it helped the city more, we felt like that was the location that helped us more.
Yeah, the only reason we done this was to get that out there, cause we couldn't get nobody else to go out there. We've tried and tried, you know? Just like I say, I tried to get Fowler to go out there, he wasn't interested in going out there.
There's, there's gonna be different types of requests and, and almost every company that's coming to the city now. Is gonna have some so- some sort of request. And I think we all just be willing to listen, we don't always have to give in to, to their, what they're saying, but we. I'll be at le- at least willing to listen because I think we could give up some opportunity that might not show back up at our door. Uh, for a while and, and we might decide, uh, that we want to at least try to work with these peoples in some way. And, uh, I'm not talking about just Jaxx and, and I'm not, I'm not just Mr. Sibley. Each case should have its own merits and I think we should listen to be regimented where we can't help them at all if they don't meet. Just a, a specific criteria. All businesses are made up different and, uh, you know, a person that sells one product won't be just exactly. Some people deal in huge volume, some people deal in lesser volume, but they're, they're good solid businesses. And so, uh, percentage is about the only thing you can work with on. And, and zero of, of nothing is nothing and I'd like to continue to cultivate growth in our town of retail and industry. But I appreciate y'all coming today, if you have any other things you wanna discuss with me anytime, this, my door's open every day and I'm here about every day and. Unless I'm out of town to a meeting.